Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 AM till further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the city's channel's YouTube channel. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Lavell?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
O'Connor's not gonna be here today.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Here.
Seven Members President?
Thank you very much as we join from our locations. Those of you who wish, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and/or put your hand on your heart and then we will have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have two to be read in the record first for Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor presents Bill Number 827. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does commend Richard Sherman for embarking on an educational paradigm shift for the families of Cambodia and credit graduates Richard Sherman for undertaking an opportunity to build a school to teach English, to change stereotypes and to provide the value of education in the country of Cambodia. The Council of the City of Pittsburgh wishes some great success and fulfillment in this remarkable effort.
Thank you very much. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Just second.
Second.
All those in favor, send a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. All right, we have two for Mrs. Smith. If the clerk will read both of them, I'll have one motion for both.
Council President Cal Smith presents Bill Number 828. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, October 22nd, 2020 to be Dr. Angela Reynolds Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Also, Bill Number 829. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, October 24th, 2020 to be Jim and Pearl Shepherd Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion for both?
Motion to approve.
Just a second. No, you're fine. I need a second.
Second.
No conversation, no conversation. All those in favor, send a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Thank you very much. The next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official actions or deliberation which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood. For the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Shaman Poma. Are you Shaman, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much for having me today. Greetings all. In Lakesh Alakaen, in the great words of my ancestors, the light in me honors the light in you. I'm here to speak today in our continuing conversation in regards to the Aboriginal American Indians and the land that is being misappropriated in many ways. There are environmental injustices that happen upon our lands that we need to address and address efficiently in ways that can sustain all humans who live upon the lands. There is the water issues. That is a very serious issue. Lead in the water has been an issue in the City of Pittsburgh for quite some time. We have methods that can purify our waters using very sustainable ancient methods that the city can benefit from when it comes to our lands. The lands are contaminated with salt, with us lead and mercury and other things, but mainly lead. And there are ways that we can help heal the land in that way too as well. We seek to work with the city in restoring our lands and our water. We need to have conversations that are beneficial for our people and for all of the citizens here in the City of Pittsburgh as well. We work with ourselves to work with you in a amicable way that is beneficial to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In addition to that, there are rec centers that have been sitting dormant for a very long time and our children have no places to socialize in a healthy, safe environment. These rec centers can be utilized by our nation so that we can create programming for our children and we can create ways for them to gain skills that will self-sustain, sustain themselves as well. These are things that the city doesn't seem to be very concerned about, although we are very concerned. So we have ways to work to help these things to change and it is your obligation as you took a sworn oath to the Constitution, as you just recited the pledge of allegiance, as you shown that you have an allegiance to the United States. We also have a allegiance to our government and honoring our government-to-government special relationship. It is upon you and it is your duty to do so. Thank you and I yield.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ikahana Halmakinah. Are you with us?
Greetings of peace, light, and love. My title is Ikahana Halmakinah, the Grand Inka of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. It is with honor and it is with great pleasure that I bring forth that which my ancestors laid, the foundation for America according to the Great Law of Peace. We shall revitalize our culture, our heritage, and our tradition within and throughout our lands. We are following the blueprint that they've laid out and we are expecting for you to honor your oath that you have taken to the Constitution to protect and support and defend the Constitution for the United States of America. It is your duty. When Andrew Jackson in 1830 led the charge with the Indian Scout Act, many of my ancestors were slaughtered. To follow that up, the Homestead Act was invoked. The doctrine of discovery was also invoked where many of our lands, our sacred places and spaces were taken and usurped and used for selfish gain in commerce. A lot of our sacred places and spaces were renamed to confuse our people. The City of Pittsburgh has only been named that since 1816. The land cannot be that which it's renamed to be. This was our sacred place and space. And it is time to honor the Aboriginal American people. It is time to tell the truth of the Aboriginal American people. According to Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution, we are and excluding Indians, not Tacs. So we don't expect for our homes, our automobiles, our way of life to be disrespected in our own land. It is a very unique time for city council. It was a very unique time for the mayor of Pittsburgh to honor these oaths. With homage and respect our people in our own land, it is only right. According to House Congress Resolution 331, this government that you are utilizing right now has its foundation based off of the Iroquois Confederacy of Nations. And so do the research. I implore you all to do the research necessary and take the steps necessary to bring forth harmony and balance and restore that onto the earth. I would like to thank Anthony Coghill for inviting us to sit down with him and to have these a very important discussions. And I will yield my...
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Minister Dominique. Minister Dominique, are you with us this morning? Minister Dominique, not hearing or seeing Minister Dominique, our next registered speaker is Dion Dupree.
Good afternoon, I mean, good morning all. My name is Dion Dupree. I'm a graduate of Westinghouse High School, Class of 94. I attended Slippery Rock University and went to Community College of Allegheny County to continue my education after completing Slippery Rock University. I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools as a assistant teacher, classroom assistant for Pittsburgh Perry, as well as juvenile probation as a community monitor for the Community Intensive Supervision Program. I was able to start my own business in music entertainment and was able to acquire a label partnership with Universal Music Group through our distribution services under our company called Grandma Music Worldwide. And what I've learned from working with youth here in the city on, in various capacities is that there was a lack of resources that was provided for those who were, and those who were interested in the entertainment field. We've worked with DJs, music producers, recording artists all over the country and have been presented many opportunities to kind of move our business from Pittsburgh, but I chose to stay here and provide the educational resources for the youth. And we have a music cohort called the Grandma Music Academy in which we are currently working with youth in between the ages of 12 and 18 and teaching them the fundamentals of the business side of music entertainment and also helping to cultivate their skills in music production, DJ, film and photography, as well as videography, as well as some graphic designs as well. And so I work with music executives and entertainers on a high level and they have been willing to volunteer their services to be able to help educate the youth that are interested in these areas. And we've been running, as I said, the Grandma Music Academy funded out of my own pocket and out of the sweat equity of those who are interested in helping the youth be able to attain, attainable skills such as DJing and me teaching them the business side of it so that they can learn how to get their LLCs or do businesses, set up banking accounts, and actually be able to develop a business behind their skillset. So I've been interested in figuring out how I could get support from the city and just be able to help further the initiative of working with more youth in the city. And we're also very much interested in opening up a music production facility in the Homewood area. As an entrepreneur, I'm very much interested in providing the resources to that community as well and using my entertainment connections to be able to provide tangible outlets. There isn't an infrastructure in the region that exists like we've created with Grandma Music Worldwide. And so I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak to you all and just provide some resources or assistance in how we can further our initiative.
Thank you very much. That takes us back to Minister Dominique. Are you with us? Minister Dominique, are you with us? Seeing no further speakers, we will be, our next order of business will be presentation of papers. We have first me, which is the Chair of Urban Recreation, Councilman Coghill for me.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill.
And Coghill presents Bill Number 818, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Western Pennsylvania Conservancy in the Amount of $17,000 for Tree Pit Site Preparation Work Completed for the East Carson Street Scape Project. Bill Number 824, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 675 of 2008, Entitled Adopting and Approving the 2009 Capital Budget and the 2009-2013 Capital Improvement Program by Transferring the Remaining $41,269.78 from Brookline Boulevard to City Farms. Bill Number 825, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 193 of 2020, that amended Resolution Number 855 of 2011, Entitled Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget in Order to Correct Job Numbers and Budget Years on the City Farms Project. Bill Number 826, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 772 of 2012, Entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2013 Capital Budget and Approving the 2013-2018 Capital Improvement Program by Transferring the Remaining $167,048.3 from Brookline Boulevard to City Farms.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, the Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Councilman, thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 819, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision into the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the University of Pittsburgh Chiller Plant Project, which will involve the construction of a 15,000-ton chiller plant and a turf athletic field located at 530 through 570 Champions Drive. The existing two athletic fields at this location will be removed. The site address is 530 and 570 Champions Drive in the 5th Ward. Bill Number 820, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the New Granada Theater Redevelopment, 2007 Center Avenue. Bill Number 821, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Habitat for Humanity of Greater Pittsburgh North Bradock Project located at 516, 518, and 520 North Bradock Avenue.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Kraus, who is the Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Lavell, Chair of Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavell presents Bill Number 822, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Department of Finance and Public Works to Execute in Agreement of Sale and All Related Documents Necessary to Effect the Purchase by the City of 5164 Broad Street in the 10th Ward and to Accept AD for the Property and Further Authorizing the Expenditures of Funds for the Purchase, Closing, and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs Not to Exceed $10,000 and Further Authorizing Acceptance of that Lot and Dedicating that Lot and an Adjacent City All Lot Together as the Nelson Mandela Peace Park. Bill Number 823, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in the Total Sum of $250,000 in Favor of Saruth Chatterjee, the Law Offices of Timothy P. O'Brien Esquire as Final Settlement related to the Action filed in the Western District Court of Pennsylvania.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services, Councilwoman Strasburger, on behalf of Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, that takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. It takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. On behalf of President Teresa Cal Smith, I have no new papers to introduce. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any, is there any further unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. And we will start, as always, with Councilman R. Daniel Lavell, Committee on Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavell presents Bill Number 812, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for October 14, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 771, Resolution Amending Resolution 880 of 2019, which authorized the fee schedule for 2020 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code in order to update the fees associated with the Shinley Park ice rink for the remainder of 2020. Bill Number 772, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in the Total Sum of $392,000 in Favor of DHA minor buying through her natural guarding CRH in care of the Law Offices of Timothy P. O'Brien Esquire as Final Settlement related to action filed in the Western District Court of Pennsylvania.
Thank you very much. The bill, you've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any further discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith? Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0.
Thank you very much. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. That takes us now to Councilman Corey O'Connor and Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Ms. Strasburger, on behalf of Mr. O'Connor, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 813, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for October 14, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 773, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter Into Three Sponsorship Agreements for the Richard S. Calligere Great Race.
Thank you very much. You've heard the reading and title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Aye, sorry, aye, I was jumping into another meeting, I apologize.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0.
Thank you very much. The bill, having received the legally required votes, is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 814, Report of the Committee on Public Works for October 14, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 766, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Federal Department of Homeland Security to Call Diesel Exhaust Apparatus in Multiple Emergency Medical Services Stations and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $591,626.75 for this stated purpose. Supplemental funds from the City of Pittsburgh 2021 Capital Budget are required in the amount of $446,457.96 for a total project cost of $1,038,083.71. Bill Number 778, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Darlington Court be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 417-06 of the Code of Ordinances.
You've heard the reentitle of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0.
The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 815, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for October 14, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 769, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code Title 6, Conduct Article 5 Discrimination, Chapter 659, All Lawful Practices, Unlawful Employment Practices, Unlawful Housing Practices, Unlawful Public Accommodation Practices to Prohibit Employment, Housing, and Public Accommodation Discrimination Based on Hairstyle and Protective and Cultural Hair Textures and Hairstyles.
You've heard the reentitle of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0.
The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. That brings us to my committee, which is the Committee on Urban Recreation. If we could have Mr. Coghill on my behalf, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 816, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for October 14, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 763, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education or Another Vendor Chosen Through the City Bid Process for the Purpose of Providing Meals in Connection with the 2020-2021 Food Service Program in the Department of Parks and Recreation. The Total Cost Shall Not Exceed $850,000. Bill Number 764, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the United States Tennis Association to Provide Supplies to Reopen the Melon Tennis Bubble, which is currently closed to the public due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $5,000. Bill Number 765, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Rachel O'Falloubie in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,200 for the Payment of Services for the Introduction of Technology Training Development and Delivery Services rendered to the Youth of the City at the some, at some of the City Parks Recreation Centers and Providing for the Payment thereof.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any further discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0.
The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. That takes us, I believe, to the last committee of today, last report. Councilman, Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross, the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 817, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for October 14, 2020. report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for October fourteen, two thousand twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven sixty-eight, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Carnegie Mellon University Scott Hall, forty-eight oh five View Street.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any further discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strausberger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Reverend Burgess' Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. I will start off with meeting announcements and then motions or resolutions from the members. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October twenty-first, at ten a.m., council will meet at our standing committee's meeting, of course chaired by our able councilman, Councilman Lavelle. To register to speak at that meeting, please call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight by nine a.m. tomorrow morning. Also, tomorrow afternoon at one thirty, a cable cast public hearing is scheduled via the Zoom platform on Bill seven oh two and seven oh three as they relate to the naming previously unnamed trails in South Side Park and Highland Park to Keeling Coal and Cat Tail Trails respectively. To register to speak at this hearing, please call the clerk's office again at four one two, two five five, two one three eight by eleven thirty a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also submit comment by emailing cityclerksoffice, that's city clerks office altogether, at PittsburghPA.gov. Please note that written comments will not be read during the meeting. All right, is there anything further from this body, starting with Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross?
Thank you, Councilman. I noticed on my Zoom screen, it does not include the L. the way it does on my door at council. But so I apologize. I was in a meeting and I had to keep jumping out of our digital chambers here for my nine o'clock meeting that continued to run over. It was a meeting with some constituents of mine in PWSA. And we have had irreconcilable differences of opinions now with the authority for a number of years. Imagine in your district, there being a dead end street with houses that have been there, I think ninety years, that have received PWSA service on a public street with a public line. And then suddenly PWSA is replacing the line in front of your house but asserting that their ownership stops some sixty feet away from your house. It might even be more and that you've been on a private line, that your street is not a public street. It's a private street with no evidence that the line under the street is not a public PWSA line, even though they've been repairing it continuously for decades and you've been paying your bills. And then suddenly PWSA is saying it's under construction, we're excavating your street, but you have a hundred foot personal private line. It's absurd. And so we were going back and forth and will be continuing to go back and forth. There's a PUC filing about it to the State Public Utilities Commission and yet they started construction. And these people, three houses in my district are running on like hundred foot garden hoses for their water from a fire hydrant. And so I had this very, very unsatisfying conversation for the last hour and a half with the leadership and I'll be making public comment this Friday as well at the PWSA board meeting. And I just, I just had to share that because I hope that doesn't happen to you in your districts.
Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of not for, not just those residents which are yours, but your continued advocacy for clean water and equitable cost throughout our city. I saw another hand, was it Councilwoman Strausberger, please?
Yeah, I don't know if Councilwoman Gross is still listening in, but I'm happy to engage in any way that's helpful from my perspective on the board.
Thank you very much for that legal friendly assistance. Any other conversation from the person?
The president's joined us and she needed to register.
Pardon me?
Council president just joined in. She wanted to register her vote, so if you give an opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you, Reverend. I'd just like to place an aye vote for the votes I missed today. Thank you.
All right, anything else, Madam President?
No, thank you for cheering the meeting in. I appreciate it.
We're in this thing, as I say in church, we're in this thing together. All right, is there any other conversation among members? Seeing none, I need a motion, one motion to do three things, to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, stand and file by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.